Good afternoon and welcome again and as always to Niles First Christian Church Disciples of Christ. My name is Pastor Chris Stark and I have the opportunity to share with you this our our second session in a five-part study focusing primarily on the nature of covenant and how we find covenantal relationship within our primary documents. Primarily, the preamble to the to the design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. The way these sessions work is we'll begin with a prayer. Go over what we hope to learn this session. We'll watch a video that's been provided by the General Church of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in Ohio, in the United States and Canada, and then move through a series of questions. The questions can move a little quickly, so I invite you if you are joining in this study as it has been recorded and made available through Facebook, feel free to pause me at any time. You can mute me too if you want to, but feel free to pause me after questions so that you can have a conversation with yourself or with those that you are engaging with as you move through this study. So as we begin, let us join together in prayer. This opening prayer is by Reverend Stephanie Kendall, named We Breathe. Let us pray. We breathe in God's grace. May it transform our insecurities so that we breathe out God's love. We breathe in God's love. May it transform our fears so that we breathe out God's hope. We breathe in God's hope. May it transform our doubts so that we breathe out God's faithfulness. We breathe in God's faithfulness. May it transform our hearts so that we breathe out the good news of Christ Jesus. We breathe in the good news of Christ Jesus. May it transform us so that we breathe out God's grace. Amen. So each week as we are using the preamble to the design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ as a foundation to delve into covenantal conversation, it's good that we reread it every week so that we can refresh what is in the preamble to the design. The design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ is kind of our bylaws. It explains how the structure of the church works within our denomination. The preamble is the introduction. It is not quite a faith statement, but it's as close as we get to a faith statement being non-creedal. Our denomination does not have a specific set of beliefs that you need to believe to be a part of us. Indeed, we welcome everyone, no matter what you believe. We join in conversation together to discern better how we are the body of Christ. So I invite you each week as we read and reread the preamble to take a look at it and consider what it is that you find that resonates with your own faith, with your own beliefs, and what is challenged by what it is you believe, your own personal theology. I invite you to take a look at these things and consider them as we move through this. So I will invite us then to take a look. I will share the screen here so that we can read together the design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. You can also find this downloadable within the document of the study that we are moving through, Covenantal Conversation with Disciples, or you can find it if you have a Chalice Hymnal on page 355. A disciple's affirmation. So I invite you to read along with me. As members of the Christian Church, we confess that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of the Living God, and proclaim Him Lord and Savior of the world. In Christ's name and by His grace, we accept our mission of witness and service to all people. We rejoice in God, Maker of heaven and earth, and in God's covenant of love, which binds us to God and to one another. Through baptism into Christ, we enter into newness of life and are made one with the whole people of God. In the communion of the Holy Spirit, we are joined together in discipleship and in obedience to Christ. At the table of the Lord, we celebrate with thanksgiving the saving acts and presence of Christ. Within the universal church, we receive the gift of ministry and the light of Scripture. In the bonds of Christian faith, we yield ourselves to God that we might serve the One whose kingdom has no end. Blessing, glory, and honor be to God forever. Amen. With that refresher of what our preamble says, it is worth noting what the learning goals of this session are primarily in this session and our time together this afternoon. It is hoped that we are able to introduce the theological concept of covenantal relationships, and the concept of covenantal relationships is foundational to who we are as faith people, to affirm the importance of a loving relationship between a living God and God's people, and to recognize the difference between covenantal relationships and contractual relationships. So to flesh that out a little more and to explain a little more, I invite you to join with me in viewing this short video clip from the Reverend Dr. Casey Sigmund. Share the screen again so that we can watch this together.
I am a disciple of Christ today because of the covenantal poetry and practice of this denomination that seeks wholeness for a fragmented world and pursues polity and policy in relationship with a living and loving God. In order to highlight our unique covenantal theology, allow me to contrast it with the contractual theology I once lived in. I lived in the land of contractual religion. The only time a word remotely equivalent to contract, sofad, appears in the Hebrew Bible is Lamentations, chapter four, verse eight, and it reads, "They are not recognized in the streets; their skin has shriveled, sofad, on their bones; it has become dry as wood." That is what contract does. It shrivels up and dries out a living God and a living witness in the body of Christ to God and with creation. It shrivels up imagination. Contract shrivels up attention and intention, making a church that strives to transcend that which is organic, rendering the church out of touch with creation as it changes and lives. For example, I reached a point in my contractual Christian tradition where I could no longer disagree or even sometimes discuss areas of disagreement with my fellow church people. For some people, my very presence as a woman called to preach was a disagreement, a breach of God's contract. And it wasn't as if my arguments didn't come from engagement with a Bible that I understood to be a living word by the power of the Holy Spirit. When the word of God is written and rendered plain in meaning, then one must believe in the Bible to prove faithful witness. But I believe in God, and I believe God still speaks through the prayerful and thoughtful practice of engaging Scripture, and I believe in people's capacity to assemble and feast together even in disagreement and discernment. Both of these core affirmations felt right at home in the covenant people who call themselves disciples of Christ. Etymologically speaking, covenant comes to us from the Latin convenir, meaning to convene, assemble, come together. Disciples embody covenant when they assemble as a congregation, a region, a general church. Covenant is not just ideologically a thing, it is physiological as well. The body must commit to assembling. Contract, it doesn't have as much to say about organic bodies. It is written or spoken agreement. It is past tense only with physical repercussion when its arrangement must be enforced by law. The etymology defines contract as parties drawn together. Think in a legally binding way. That doesn't sound loving or living, but we have also taken up this word of contract to speak to disease. We don't say covenant a disease, we say contract a disease. It also means to decrease in size and number. Covenant people are lovingly bound to one another while contract people are legally bound. Covenant is a living and loving promise or commitment between living and loving parties. It also relates to context, the same loving care. Contract people are bound, bound by adherence to an agreement. Context is not written into the agreement. When one breaks the rule of the contract, it is rendered null and void. Covenant, it's a verb. Theologically, it's not a noun. It is an agile way of following God in context, in relationship with other living things. I see this agility in the ideal of our tradition that there is no creed but Christ, thus we are able to think and act quickly when crises come around, participating in God's work for wholeness, shalom, in a fragmented world. Covenant people are also agile, and that when conflict comes around, when partners disagree about hard things, ideally, we work through conflict to reach a new level of understanding and a new way of being that we had not imagined before. Conflict can actually be a beginning, a beginning of a new chapter rather than the ending of the agreement and the relationship. Why did I join the disciples of Christ? I was asked this question a lot when I left the evangelical world, my home church, went to a Presbyterian seminary, PCUSA, and felt lovingly called into this movement. I'll tell you why. It's because it's one of the few bodies seeking to follow a living God in word and in deed. It's also because these affirmations in our preamble create the possibility for people to pursue fellowship through conflict rather than having to choose teams every time conflict silences disagreement and discussion. Why did I join the disciples? Because our preamble and design are organizing propositions rather than laws writ in stone. Remember the words of the prophet Jeremiah concerning the covenant of Yahweh. I will put my instruction deep within them on their hearts. I will be their God, and they will be my people. Again, God chooses living pages to tell the story of covenant, not stone. At our best, disciples of Christ embody commitment to discipleship of a God whose word was and is made flesh by the power of the holy, living Spirit of God. Finally, as a process theologian, I also feel at home in our promises to adventure with God and one another as disciples of Jesus Christ. In the preamble, we speak of a God who is living. Disciples of Christ theologian and minister Bruce Epperali beautifully sums up the process understanding of God and ourselves in this way. Quote, "In human life, growth is essential to well-being and maturity. Persons, institutions, or corporations that never change are labeled dysfunctional or irrelevant, and will likely, at least in the case of institutions and corporations, eventually cease to exist. Higher organisms, as Alfred North Whitehead said, the founder of process philosophy, they originate novelty to match the novelty of the environment. In a world in which all things flow, ongoing creative transformation is not only healthy but necessary for survival. Even Jesus underwent change and growth," end quote. Disciples, if we are really a movement and a covenant people, then we really are still growing and maturing so that we can bring good news into changing situations in our neighborhoods and our world because they are all one and the same. We can meet the shifts with agility and not fall apart when novelty comes our way. After all, covenant people dwell with God in tents, not fortresses. We also speak in the preamble of a God whose covenant is loving. We are lovingly, not legally bound. This is a relational understanding of power, honoring creativity, and open to the reality of otherness. Again, contrast covenant to contract. Contract relations are typically unilateral and coercive in power, seeking to minimize or eliminate others' impact on that power of the written word. I hear whispers of process theology again in this loving covenant, relational covenant modeled by God to us and expected to be reflected in our relationships with one another, but also our fellow creatures. If I were to push back on our preamble in any one way from a process perspective, which I trust I can do with you all in our covenant relation, it would be that in this time, it's not enough to be bound to one another's who are of the human variety alone. God's covenant love is for all creation, and so we must acknowledge our responsibility to include a fragmented creation and ecosystem in our understanding of world. But now I'm running out of time. In summary, the theology of covenant offers a hermeneutic for contextual decision-making. We agree to assemble as to not assemble is to not verb our covenant, and it is a verb. In the flow of changing techno-culture and environmental costs of travel, and now in the age of a pandemic, we may need to decide on novel means of assembling in this digital age. Thank you for the honor of sharing these affirmations of and propositions for a covenantal way of being the Christian Church Disciples of Christ with you all. May you lovingly and livingly lead our movement into God's dream come down for all flesh, but all life to feel, even through conflict and ambiguity as we move into the unknown. Oops, I told you mom slippage. Thank you very much.
Now, we give thanks for the Reverend Dr. Casey Sigmund for that sharing of what covenant can be understood as and how it might contrast from contractual language. I have to ask, what stood out to you in her presentation? Did anything in her story resonate with you, or was there anything you disagreed with? I appreciated personally that she expanded the concept of covenant language to all creation. Certainly, we see covenants being made with God in those first chapters of Genesis and the creation stories that that all of creation, that all that God breathed into being was in agreement with God in covenantal language. I also appreciate her distinction from covenant to contractual. I'm sure that that's something that is nuanced in our modern English language, but certainly as found in Scripture and as we use it theologically, there is a notable difference. The first question I have for you then, and as I said before, feel free to pause after these questions so that you can reflect and give your own answers as you move through these this material and these questions. Dr. Sigmund highlights her journey to intentionally choose to be part of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. How did you start attending your current congregation? If it is here at Niles First Christian Church Disciples of Christ, how did you find your way here? Or if you're finding this as a member of a different community or faith community, how did you find your way there? Did you start attending your current? How did you start attending your current congregation? Who brought you, or did you grow up here? What drew you to your current congregation? If you were raised disciples, what has kept you in relationship with this particular tradition? And if you were raised in another tradition like Dr. Sigmund, what are some differences you have noticed between the disciples tradition and the tradition in which you were raised? I'll speak personally and say that I grew up a disciple. In fact, my home church is just a couple miles down the road from where I serve now in Niles First Christian Church Disciples of Christ. My home church is in Gerard, First Christian Church in Gerard. I have always resonated, not only in being brought up in the disciples, but I have always found resonance within this faith community, the ability to question and to still be embraced, the ability to challenge lovingly, to challenge our own faith, let alone the faith of community, to still be embraced and welcomed, to to be to know that other folks can challenge and that we are able to accept and love still, that there is no adherence. It reminds me of the old the old Christian adage, in essentials, unity, in non-essentials, liberty, in all things, charity. We are able or should be able to have loving discussions about the things that matter most to us and still know that we are loved and accepted. And in a world where this is increasingly difficult, where it's difficult to have any opinion without someone being upset, I find it liberating that within the disciples, within the Christian Church Disciples of Christ, we are able to have these difficult conversations about the very foundations of who we are, what we believe, and how we live, and still know that even though some folks might disagree within our own faith communities, we are able to hold each other in mutual love and admiration and respect. I think that that is one of the most powerful things that we can be doing in our world today to reconcile what is so fragmented. What do you think? The second question then. In what ways is your congregation already living out this concept of covenant, a relationship with God and with other living things? Well, I'd be excited to hear your answer. And again, as we move through these questions, feel free, as this is loaded to Facebook, feel free to comment in any way that you to any question that speaks to you or to any question that you feel like sharing your answer to. I invite you to do so in the comments or to share them with me personally if you'd like to have that conversation. But I can say that our congregation, Niles First Christian Church Disciples of Christ, lives out this concept of covenant. It's something that I find most readily accessible when we join together at the Lord's table, to know that we are inherently and intrinsically connected to one another, that there is a bond forged in the breaking of bread as as those on the the road to Emmaus knew Christ as they broke bread with him. There is something about us sharing with each other, breaking bread and sharing cup at the Lord's table that allows us to recognize that we are connected to one another, that we are of the same body, the body of Christ, and we will be until Christ comes again. A third question. How has a conflict resolved through covenant relationships changed or reshaped your congregation or community? How has a conflict resolved through covenant relationships changed or reshaped your covenant or your congregation or community? What was that process like? Now, I would hate to draw anecdotal evidence here with without asking folks from our community if it's okay to share. So I'll hold back on that one, but I would invite you to consider how something like this has been resolved within our community. For certainly, I see it happening frequently, interpersonally and at a congregational level. I see that covenant that we have that joins us one to another is used frequently in a way to make amends, to resolve conflicts, and to reconcile what otherwise might be fractured or fragmented. How have you seen it? Another question. When has your congregation felt tempted or fallen into the trap of living out contract because of fear? What was the context, then? How was it resolved? I can name there too several situations, but without the consent of the individuals, I would hold back on that. But I can say that there have been times that there has been things that folks have disagreed with me about in my preaching or in stances that I've taken theologically, and there have been a few cases where no conversation ever occurred. And indeed, there was fracturing that happened because of that. It hasn't been the case for the majority of times, but it does happen, and it's a reminder to me that reconciliation can always occur, that we should be united in essentials and not overly divided. Indeed, we should be granting liberty to each other in non-essentials. Of course, that leads to a deeper conversation about what is essential and what is non-essential, but I love to have those conversations. I enjoy the conversation that surrounds delving into theology and what it means to me and what it means to other individuals and where we find commonality in between those ways to bridge the gap. For certainly, the concept of how we follow God should bring us one closer to another. Another question. In her presentation, Dr. Sigmund highlights the connection between covenant and assembly and challenged us to think about the novel ways of assembling. How has your community already lived into this challenge in light of a year that has essentially required physical distancing? What ways have you already adapted and reimagined new ways of assembly, community, and relationships? What is gained from this adaptation and reimagination? What is missed from this current reality? I have heard opinions shared about this, about how our changing and restructuring of worship and how we gather together over the past year and a half has had some pros and had some cons. Just coming from my own perspective, we have reached out in a way through this pandemic that I do not believe has been done before at Niles First Christian Church Disciples of Christ. Moving to, we have moved originally, moved completely online. We church never closed, of course, but our regular gatherings in person were suspended as we went to recording and editing and and uploading our services for for months, and then we moved to a hybrid model and had folks back in the congregation, but we still livestream our services. We livestream or at least have Zoom studies like we are right now. So our different gatherings have different ways of of being accessible for folks that are unable to gather or are still uncertain about gathering or or are immunocompromised. And as we began doing this, we found that we were reaching people that were well beyond who we might normally reach in our physical reaching out. There were folks from different countries that were joining us in worship, and we have found that some folks that have been unable to leave their house have been able to join us again for the first time in years. It has been eye-opening how a challenge set before us has allowed us to be more accessible, to allow God to be more accessible, to reach out in ways that we didn't think possible before it was necessitated by these unusual and uncertain circumstances. Another question. Do you think living out covenant is different in a digital world? If so, how? There certainly are nuances that are different. One of the things that I struggle with the most is not being able to have a shared loaf that we can break together. There is something so visceral and moving in having one loaf that is broken for all of us that are gathered. And when we first went online, everybody had what they had gathered from, you know, their own home. And certainly, it reminded me that we always are sharing broken bread because the loaf that we have at Niles First Christian isn't the same as the loaf that's at St. Stephen's or the loaf that's at the American Baptist Church. But as these loaves are broken, they But as these loaves are broken, they still represent and are modeled after the broken body of our Lord that we celebrate at, at the communion table. So it's always fragmented bread, I suppose. But I do miss with one gathered community, having the opportunity to share of one loaf. But again, sharing covenant in a digital world has become easier in some ways because we're able to reach out and, and we're able to evangelize, we're able to make further strides in our mission and ministry. We're just able to do things that we would be limited physically by, had we not moved to a more digital format. That being said, there are so many pitfalls with, with the digital world as well. Social media is an opportunity to bring us together and to tear us apart, but that might be a study for a different time. Another question then. We have practiced physical distance for a while now. Many congregations pivoted in a variety of ways to continue worshiping and serving together. Some congregations remain physically distant, while others have returned to physical ministries with safety protocols. Individuals and congregations alike have experienced fearfulness, feeling frozen and fragmentation. How can this concept of covenantal relationships overcome these three very present fur words, fear, frozen, fragmentation? If covenant, in a way that Reverend Dr. Casey Sigmund named, covenant is something living and moving and thriving. It's something that is less static than contractual language. It's something that allows for grace, and it's something that allows for continuing conversation. And as such, I think that covenant allows us to be in a relationship with one another that contractual language might not necessarily allow for. And it's that living, breathing, moving relationship that allows us to overcome our fears, that allows us to not be frozen in place or to be fragmented. The beauty of covenant is that it continues to call back. I think of God's covenants with the Hebrew people or with the Israelites, with Abraham and with Isaac and Jacob. Even though these covenants were sometimes broken or ignored by human beings, God had the opportunity to renegotiate, to, to reestablish, to renew and reinvigorate. And every time we, as broken people or fragmented people, disregard the, the loving commitment that is part of our covenant with each other, we can be reminded and renewed and reinvigorated by those other folks and all of creation, and certainly God, that holds intention, that contract, that the covenantal language with us. Covenant allows for grace and forgiveness. Our last question for this session then. Dr. Sigmund suggests that covenant is a tool that can combat initial reactions to live out fear and fragmentation. How might covenantal relationship be used in your congregation, wider community, to foster a movement for wholeness in a fragmented world? Well, as Dr. Reverend Dr. Casey Sigmund reminds us, covenant is something that is overarching over all creation. Covenant is something that binds not only us human beings one to another and to God, but all of creation, which God has found to be good, which God has breathed life into as Creator and Sustainer. If we live out covenant as foundational to who we are as created beings, then we have to be reminded that it is our duty, our goal, our job, the, the blessed work of, of, of all of humanity and the Spirit by our side to be reconcilers, to be, to be peacemakers, to be those that reach out to those that have been cut off or marginalized or set aside or made to feel or be considered as less than. This covenantal language should cause us to reach out, not just to introduce good news to people, but to allow people to live in the good news that we experience every day of our lives as faithful followers of the Christ whom we serve. A covenantal relationship demands that there is no separation. And if there is brokenness, that we be reconcilers in this creation. So where we see hurt, we must be those who go out to help or to heal. Where we see broken bridges, it is up to us to mend and repair. What our, our siblings in Judaism would call tikkun olam, repairers of the world. This is our sacred duty, and we find it through the lens of covenantal language, that each of us are intrinsically connected one to another and to our God, and indeed, to all creation. Might we live it out and might it change the world? So as our time comes to a close, might we close in prayer? Spirits of creation, we are thankful for the limitless opportunities to live a covenantal life, a life that connects us to all living things, opens doors for resolving conflict and holds us fast when the fear would cause us to step away from the covenantal path. Continue to create anew, the desire to follow the way of Jesus as we foster wholeness in this fearful, frozen, fragmented world. It is in Christ's name and by His grace, we accept our mission and service to all people. Amen. Go in love and go in peace. Be repairers of this world through this covenant that God has established with us, with each other, and with all creation. Amen.